Let me, we're good to go?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, we'll call the meeting to order. Last, the clerk called roll.
Al, Doctor. Uh, Dan, Dan Wurisca.
Here.
Meredith Fines.
Yeah.
Phil Dyson. Eileen Morse.
Yeah.
Anything?
Yeah.
And Mary.
Here. Good. Let's have a little. Well, Stan, have our pledge allegiance, then we'll get down to business.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which is standing on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. Okay, item two. Regular meeting consent calendar approval of the agenda. Approval of past minutes from May eighth and the work say, work session in May fifteenth, regular meeting. And approval of the financial report. All that stuff is in your package, I suppose. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda? That's presented.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Anybody have anything from those they want to add or switch or do anything with?
Have a quick question about the financial report. Only because of my inability to read it effectively and quickly. We had talked about getting the sign taken care of before the end of. Um. The fiscal year. Did we, did we do that? Is that on the financial report email?
A sign, Meredith? I'm sorry.
It was. Um. This, the sign for, um.
For the parks.
Thank you. Sorry, I lose words sometimes. Um, but, but just the, the little street sign showing where, uh, the, the park entrance was.
Okay. I'm with you now.
Yes, I talked with Eileen a little bit about it over the email. It's in our budget for next year.
It is.
So we'll do the line items. We have specific line items for it.
Perfect, okay.
We, one thing I will mention, just to say too, what could happen with this. Some years ago, we had some temporary signs that we had, so it could be that, like, they were not cheap. I mean, they, they weren't expensive to make. They were almost like a political sign, a couple of those, but it. I'm not saying we should have to do that, but they were ones that we used for a while. Maybe something like that was created quickly. Inexpensively while we have the time to make better signs. Just a thought. I'm trying to remember how many years ago that was, but we had several for a while until they got all beat up and broken.
Okay, so it's been moved to seconded. Any further discussion on approving the consent calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you. Public forum, I see one member of the public in attendance here. Anything on your mind you'd like to speak to tonight?
Yeah, thank you.
Nice to see you back in town.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there might be somebody online.
I was just gonna ask Javier next if there's anybody on, on the Zoom end of this thing.
Just us.
Okay, just us for the moment. All right. I don't really have a whole lot to add to anything, um, reported last week at the work session. Other than to say that we had, do have some things coming up this week, which is, uh. Tomorrow, of course, is Battoe. If there's enough water in the river to get Battoes down here, but with the rain we've had in the last. Couple of days, maybe, maybe they may not be here at five thirty or five, six o'clock, but hopefully they'll show up at some point. Thursday morning, at ten o'clock, the, uh. Be the opening of the transfer station up at Keene, where the, uh. People can take their trash and garbage and have it. Taken on to the big dump somewhere in the sky, but, um. That's a ton of clock for sort of a grand opening ribbon cutting, so I'm gonna go down there for that. Uh. There are several, even though Juneteenth was yesterday, there are several, um, events primarily on Saturday. Starting at, uh, ten o'clock over Union Baptist Church and a tour of the church and. Uh, the home behind the church, which was actually a school at one time. It was like the first black school here in the area. You know, Marl County. A lot of history in that. Private residence now, but they're opening it up for us to those who wish to, to visit. Then we'll come down here and see, uh, the plaque that we dedicated last year to Miss Lewis over by the tavern. And from there, we'll go to, uh. Museum, uh, to see the new display on, uh, S-Mot. And, uh, that would be the highlights of Saturday. Plus, we have the Pollinators Festival on Saturday, so. And I don't know of anything else at the moment, but, uh.
Mr. Mayor, might I add one thing?
Sure.
Um, I'm not a member of the Scottsville Baptist Church, but like their youth event, they had a few weeks ago on Thursday, Friday. I'm sorry, on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, they have, I think, a revival two nights at the. Pavilion and one night at, one day at their church. Yeah, so that's, that's not something they've done, I guess, in a long time.
Okay, that's good. Well. Speaking of the pavilion, evidently there was a bear in town last Friday night and, uh. He kind of made a mess of. At least one trash can and with some personal deposits along the way and. Uh, Mr. Jernigan, who has that first stall with the produce, he had to. Had to clean, uh, up quite a mess, so he could, could open up his. Vendorship. Saturday morning, so there are bears in the neighborhood. I have a friend that lives over, just over in Buena, and she's got a regular one. He keeps visiting. Her alarm, Lucy saw one recently. And she's just down at the end of my property. So, uh, keep your eyes open. We don't want anything to happen like happened to the gentleman in Arizona. And, uh. That supposedly was a black bear, and that's what we have around here, and there usually you can say boo and they'll run away, but, uh, don't take any chances with them. So that's my report. Any questions? Um. Turn it over to the staff. Ms. Carter, you have anything you'd like to report on?
Yes, the first, at first, um, understanding for my clerk to update you on the planning of the Battoe Festival. And we'll continue like that, that we're gonna do very quickly and. And he's done a great job in a very short period of time.
Um, so, that does, that's a little bit more. So, depending on how the water is, depends on when, uh, Battoes are coming in, but I am planning on having our. Uh. We'll have two food trucks, and I talked to a third food truck in town to let them know. That we'll be having live music in the afternoon into the evening over at Canal Heights Square. So staff has prepared Canal Heights Square for, um. For the community to enjoy it. Um, we'll have music starting at three thirty and going until seven thirty. Um, so I welcome anybody to come down, uh, travel with food, hear a little bit of music. Um, I'll work primarily on that in the afternoon with, uh, staff. To maybe get a little bit of pens out, depending on how raised, but beyond that, we're pretty set with that and, um. We'll wait for the Battoes to come in. Um, no, outdoor refreshment area this year, um, didn't have enough vendors that were on board, but I hope to do that for the board. But beyond that, um, we're ready with music and food, and then, uh, we'll see how the crowd is this year, uh, depending on what we.
Okay.
And then, uh, would you like an update on board?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we move off of that, can I just ask, is there a flyer or anything Javier with a list of goings on, or is it posted anywhere or anything like that?
The Canal Society shares some information, but it's usually, uh. More of a business promotion of, uh, please enjoy the historic downtown Scottsville. Um, we did share some, um. Radio copy on Battoe when it's set on for Fourth of July, so. But again, a little bit of word out on that first.
Unfortunately, we cannot get into our website to change, put anything on there.
Really? We don't have the login credentials?
For Facebook, yeah.
Really?
Or we've been cheated.
We have no contact for Mr. Lawless?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Wayne.
All right. We, it, it strikes me that we should look at any other access points that we don't have, you know, that we need. Um. The credentials from. And follow up, you know, just have one conversation if we contact him instead of having to go back for several.
Yeah, I can check our password name.
Yeah, because I know when I was, um, registered for a conference. It was under his personal credentials for VML or something like that, not the one you did. It was. Something before that. So it wasn't for VML, it was for something else. But we should just check all of our access points and make sure, and in the future, we should log everything with a generic, like, town administrator or something like that. Instead of somebody's personal credentials and log that somewhere. And the fourth, yeah, sorry.
So for the fourth. We're wrapping up. Um. I'll submit, already checked in with, uh, Brent to the baby, I think the crowd, because we have this flat here. And heard news that Commerce Mountain is, uh, not giving it this year, so I checked in with Chief Jenkins about the fees on his side. And then we talked with the maintenance, Ms. Carter, about why we need to do a staff. Um, we'll have, uh, Chamber Commerce is nice enough to have a, uh, vendor sale through the morning. So I'll wrap up a little bit of details about who needs to stay. Um, a little bit longer in the afternoon Thursday, but that'll be, uh, we, of course, have the parade in the morning. Um, we'll wrap up that and a vendor in the morning. We'll have a afternoon, um, and then I'll have food trucks starting to come in at two. Um, I'm working with, uh, Ms. Hines and our Farmers Market Manager on activities for children. For, uh, the afternoon, kind of keep the lightness throughout the day. Um, beyond that, uh, we'll have a true pace playing, uh, music at seven PM and then fireworks. So, uh, we have all our food trucks in line. Uh, I'm following up with any partners. Uh, for both events, we have all the facilities you usually need, especially when you have a bigger crowd. Um, that's gonna get, uh, all set up and, um. Think, uh, same thing we're doing radio ads, and then I send information to, uh. Uh, community members making a flyer for us, so, um.
Have you stocked up on candy?
That's the last thing. I asked somebody. So I asked somebody about candy recommendations, but.
For those, yeah. Council people that are available and wish to, we usually congregate up at the corner or we have a slot where. Just kind of walk downhill together and throw candy at people.
Do that.
Just, um.
I would.
If you've never done it before.
No.
Don't think you have to get rid of all your candy in the first two blocks, so then you don't have it.
Yeah. Uh. So where do you congregate and stuff?
Round Nancy's house.
Over on Nancy's house on the corner of, uh.
That's where the.
James River twenty. They assemble in the cemetery and they come up and. Up, up James River and turn left on to twenty to get south into town, so we're usually out to. His Gill's side yard there, the big white house on the corner.
Okay.
And, uh, he'll see us wander about, about aimlessly at that time of morning. But, uh. The parade gets off at nine, so need to be there by eight thirty.
Eight thirty, okay.
And your daughter certainly welcome to Marshawn.
Nice to hear.
Throw candy. Anybody's, one day, a couple of years, Dan's. Kids carried the banner. This is town council and. Yeah, that was fun.
Nice.
So anyhow, any questions for, uh? The staff?
I just, I, I'm sorry, Eddie, did you have, did I interrupt?
Well, I've got a few things I want to add to the question.
Okay.
Okay.
The only thing I, I would like to say is, um, first of all, a great job, you know, pulling everybody together in a short amount of time. I know it sort of caught us a little bit off guard. One thing I was going to ask. Can we have a, um. Sort of, uh, an after meeting, once everything's over, to get all parties on the table? Um, I think Becky, you have said, let's start planning right away after this one. Um, I'd like to get some lessons learned and then look at how we might be a little bit more coordinated next year.
For one step ahead of you.
Sorry. Can you put me on that list? I would love to come and add some feedback that I've heard from people in town and just my own observation. Just in the interest of, uh. Of, uh. Improvement next year, and we can always improve. I'm sorry, Eddie, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, glad to hear that. Oh. Okay, that's, uh, just a bull tomorrow. Now, uh, see Javier, you said that staff had been referring the basin, what was the prayer?
Uh, we cleaned out, uh, one of the, uh. Battoe boats.
Which one?
That middle one?
I cleaned it out, sir.
Okay. So I checked in on it.
So you checked on it?
Yes.
Okay, I cleaned it, you checked it?
Not today, but last week.
Okay.
Did you have to clean it too? Or no?
No.
Yeah.
Asked to wrap up with it.
Okay.
No, that's what I'm saying. Our maintenance, uh, was on vacation last week, so we could have Battoe Festival. I don't know who scheduled you with that, but it was a pretty bad time. Um. So, yeah, I cleaned out all three boats. Um, the grass needed to be cut. It hasn't been cut. Okay. What do you think it was, uh?
It was all hour washed, then it was like summer break now in the morning.
In the morning, that thing. Well, I'll tell you, Becky, it's about the late enough. You know, it's. Uh, did you get the trash empty then? It wasn't yesterday, so I don't know.
They were empty today.
Okay.
Given that we have bears in the area, we probably should be vigilant about.
What, what I'm trying to say is, you know. We can't wait to the last minute to do this stuff, so we all know when you have four theaters, so I think everybody can do another job. Probably do out four compared to. The preparations that have been made.
I think that vacation was approved beforehand.
I'm sure it was, yeah. I'm sure it was.
But that's a good point of feedback, I think, that we can take into next year, make sure everybody's here on board, et cetera.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, uh.
I know, I think.
I'm real.
Consider it, and.
You know.
Okay, uh, Councilman, just one thing. So just to follow up on what you said, first of all, I think you make a really good point, and the, the question to the administrator. Is there, so let's just say Counselor Payne has. Thoughts and concerns he wants for July fourth, would, would, should he share them with you, or what's the best way? So we have, we don't have the same thing happen again for the fourth.
Well, I come down and talk to Becky once a week.
Hmm, so just making sure.
Come down and talk to, uh, the chief twice a week. I'm in town. So yes, now you come, I come to Javier, I come to everybody.
No, well, no, I was just meaning, what's the official, like, what, what official, like, if somebody has a, uh, something they want to express? Is, are we just making clear the process? Would, would we, is that the process we would talk to, to you, that I think, correct?
I mean, you wouldn't have a concern.
Yeah.
Well, when you.
Yeah, so any points of feedback that should go into this meeting, then we forward them to you and you can compile the list and we can use that. In the discussion, is that reasonable?
I mean, preparation, especially for the fourth, is very. New to me, he's familiar, and thank goodness. So we're trying to make sure that everything is done and looks nice.
Because what, one thing, I, I presume, to the credit of Counselor Payne, what he did is wonderful, so thank you for what you did.
Looked at it big and do.
Well, it's, it's good that you did it, and I think you're highlighting. A weakness that we have at the moment, and we just want to make sure we're all in good communication with our town administrator, so. We make it easy, you know, because you're, one of the credits to you, Counselor Payne, is that you're, you, you see it. And you see it and you know what's there, so that's a helpful eye to have, because I'm not down there that much. You are, and it's helpful to hear what you see.
And he also acts on it, right?
Yeah.
He jumps in and takes the charge.
Well, I went down and took the. Thomas Market toilet this morning. And, um, it must have been the person that was in there just a few minutes before we undoubted the toilet. It stopped up and they tried to overflush it. And the whole floor was soaking wet with, um. Anything you can imagine when you go in the toilet. Um, when I leave here, I'm gonna take the key to that restroom. And just lock it up. Just lock, lock it up because. I'd rather have one locked up than have one. That's not presentable, sure.
Just open it for events.
No, no matter. It's an advantage. You can get out of there without the FDA coming in. Not me.
We just have plumbing.
Well. Maybe, maybe, you know, we ought to get a fat.
We just have plumbing.
Are you talking about the one next, at the pavilion, next to the.
Lady's toilet, right hand side, lower level.
Is that, do we know if that's the one that was worked on?
Dancing came in this morning and we're gonna work on all of that. Just come out with them.
Oh, shit, they haven't done yet?
Yeah, so I need to follow up.
They had, I know, as of, uh, eight o'clock this morning, but excuse me, seven o'clock this morning, that was the other.
They were scheduled for eight thirty, so.
I, I'm sure they solved the problem when they got there. It's to get there.
But there is still a problem. When rains with the.
With, with, with all the rain out, it's, it's, the dust in the ceiling. From the gravel blew it down. All right, let me get off the toilets. I'm talking about. Uh, uh, that's a figure of speech. Yep, that'll get off the pot, uh. I, I talked with, uh, Chief Jenkins, and let me assure everyone that he's talked with every agency that would be involved, uh, for both events. Um. And he is on top of everything, so he would. You know, rest of the use that, uh, Scottville Police Department would do their part for both festivities. Um, I make the same thing I make every year. This festival seems to be now jointly sponsored by the Fire Department and the town. And on July the fifth. You can't find a fireman in town. They don't know how to clean up, so if you're gonna sponsor it. You know, I think we should have reached out to them before then and said, hey, you know, come on down on the fifth, you don't clean up. Or the sixth or the seventh. Uh, they've, they've never done it that I know of, and I don't expect them to do it this year either, but it's a jointly sponsored event. That's me.
Good. But do we have plans for the after event? After the fourth cleanup the next day, do we have anything?
Volunteers that are on parade. And then. Last year, if budget allows, I'll try to get a street sweeper again to help out and clean up.
Yeah, I think it's. It's, you know. It's a great service that they do to the community, so we can. Not expect everything, but it would be good that as part of our event, we also put cleanup. As an activity and, you know, make it a.
In years past, that's been a cleanup day.
Yeah.
Town volunteers.
If we advertise it right and stuff, we may get a few volunteers, you know, I would certainly come down, my family would probably come, but. We should just add that on as part of the plan.
Sure, if you would have fifty families show up on July the fourth, you ought to be able to have five or six show up on July the fifth.
Yeah, but there's a lot more than just that day that goes into it, right? They do a lot of activity, so. Um. You know, we can spread that. That workload, I think, a little bit more broadly, but your point is, is taken. Um.
Anything else from the staff?
Oh, can I add, um?
Yes, sir.
WCHP has given us, um, I say us, uh, the Fire Department and the town of Scottsville, a big promotion. Um, just about every other hour, they mentioned the Scottsville Parade and following, so, you know, expect to be proud.
Yes. So. Anything else from staff? So reports to charter committees, planning commission, ARB. Mr. Payne, you got anything else you could add from any meetings you've been involved in?
Uh, I haven't been involved in any meetings, just with, uh, uh. Chief Jenkins.
Okay, yeah, I met with him last week too, so. He's got it under control.
He does.
Yeah. Ms. Morse, you got anything you want to report on?
Plant, do you want me to report out on planning commission? Okay, I, um. Attended because Counselor Grisco was out of town. We discussed the new website with them. I sent them the link and the list of, uh. Aspects that needed correction or attending to, so they have that information. They were curious as to what's going on and what the plans are for the future. They discussed homestays, that was on the agenda, and what to do about short-term rentals and whatnot. There's still some. Ongoing discussion about that. Uh, let me see. Subdivision ordinance on the East Village was approved, VDOT approved it, so it looks like. That can move forward, I expect at any point in time.
I have the documents now, where the, this, they, VDOT is not, they.
Okay, great, Becky, thank you. Um. Ms. Carter's setting up a roundtable with VDOT. Rebecca, do you want to say anything about that? It started with this discussion. Do you want to mention anything about that?
I think the mission that's on, like, two members. And we got two from the council.
No.
Yeah, and I know you've done outreach for questions and things to sit down and talk to VDOT about.
We're still getting some of those in, and they, they, VDOT wants to see the question, so they know which departments could bring this table.
Okay.
So anytime we would want to do this, or even other. Issues, want to talk with them. They would bring different departments to the table, so, um. For gathering and stealing them. I think probably Lincoln will, someone will up for us, plus this first roundtable, Smiley involved with them.
Comprehensive plan, right? So now is the time, if you have any questions, to submit them. I volunteered to attend. Counselor Payne, um, has volunteered, so send them to Becky and we'll make sure they get. Um, on the agenda. Let's see. And then Lincoln, uh, Mr. Lewis briefed the planning commission on the. Overall approach to the comprehensive plan. I think target completion date is early next year. He's got a very well-developed plan for that. Um, there are a lot of, a number, not a lot, a few issues that. Are coming up as a result of just basic changes like homestays and. Uh, temporary lodgings and things like that. Um, that are on the agenda of the planning commission, and I think they're moving ahead full steam. And that's about it.
Might add, again, it was brought up that it was time to. Uh, revisit the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinances, but. Really, that should be done after you adopt a comp plan, because then you have to bring those two ordinance in compliance.
With your comp plan, so everything's.
Same. Uh. So we would get to work on, or you all would get to work on that.
And Mr. Lewis is doing a good job of trying to make sure that the plan is in alignment with our strategic plan, so that everything should link seamlessly. Okay?
Good. Hi, soon. Glad you could make it. You got anything to report?
Uh. What did you want to talk about with your issue?
Okay, I can.
A good part of the government service was, uh. Uh, some of the issues that Eileen brought up. I can talk about a few things, but she, and several that she, there was more than that.
So Counselor Payne graciously, uh, stepped aside, so I could attend and brief out on a few things. The website, um. Gotten some new information, but content migration on the part of Civic Plus is supposed to be completed. By the end of this month, and our training is set up for. The week after Fourth of July. They will host it on Tuesday and on Thursday, and anybody can pick a time and come and get trained. It's the approach to, um. Get con, assign content moderators to different sections of the website, so that planning commission can keep up their section, town can keep up our section. We can, uh, Police Chief. SVPD can keep up their section, or at least point to their Facebook page, or however they want to architect content. So, um, so that's going on. I briefed out on strategic planning. I hope to finish out the strategic plan. I'm in the middle of editing right now. I hope to have that for the next working session for you to review. And get it finalized. Um, I briefed on the T-Mobile grant that I'm trying to submit. That's due at the end of the month. And the title of that is Main Street Revitalization, and it does include funding for. Signage and maps and other things, so, um, I'd like to share that with everybody, probably want to have a. A decent edit of version, but it is due soon. Uh, maps, we discussed maps, and we talked about that at working session, that different types of maps, what kind of maps we might want. On the kiosk versus in brochures and things like that. Jack Maxwell has been helping with some of the utility maps in town for, um, emergency response, and that's been of good help. Um, they, the group wanted to know about the town administrator job search. So Meredith, I assume you're gonna. Do a brief out on that, so I will hold that. And then I did talk about the, uh, the. Issue of the mural that has been painted down on. The entrance to the town. Um, that hit. Um, that hit was not approved, nobody really realized who did it, when it went up, I think the. Fire chief said he has an idea of when it went up, but, um. There's some other graffiti down there that Jack Maxwell has pointed out, I think we need some. Cleanup down there, and there are, um. Regulations, as I've stated before, about painting on those walls, and that mural should probably. Come down.
We also talked about, uh. Quite a bit with Kevin Quick, uh, maintenance, uh, and. Trying to track businesses and visitors and making sure that we're maintaining, it's a long-term issue. So we really want to try to put that on the agenda every month to talk about maintenance. And the other thing is, uh, on Lindsay Street, uh, we're waiting for Miss Utilities to mark the underground line, so we can put a no parking sign. There, because there still are people parking on that street and, uh. We have, most people are following a memorandum that there's no parking on Lindsay Street, but we need to have that sign installed. So that, in fact, there was somebody there today, I think. So that's, uh, that's clear.
And Chief Jenkins beautifully, it should just check his.
Oh, he did. Well, that's, that's one way, maybe we don't need that, the word will get out.
Any questions for either Mr. Heisen or Ms. Morse?
I do, excuse me, Mr. Ray, I do have a question for, um. For staff about that on Lindsay Street, someone asked me. We were talking about utilities and having Miss Utility, you called Miss Utility. Have they come out? Do we have it marked for where that sign goes? I know, Mr. Ralales, you said the signs were in.
Order has been. Yeah, the orders can put in the V dot, but they have not, not yet.
Is V dot gonna install the sign?
We'll do that. No, we'll do that one.
Is it, so is that a V dot maintained street? I wouldn't think so.
That's our street.
So we would have to mark it, correct?
Yeah.
That Mr. Chelton will mark it.
And we, yeah, we, we install it.
Put in an issue telling they will mark it.
So. There seems to be some confusion on whether we mark where the sign goes. And then Miss Utility comes and tells you where the utilities are in relationship to that. Or if they just come and mark the utilities, and then we mark where the sign goes. Some people want, at least one person in town said their experience has been, we have to mark it, and they come in. And then mark the utilities.
I've always had Miss Utility come and mark before we did any.
That's what, that's what my experience has been.
Because we might mark it in a place that we can't.
They're gonna do that. That's the plan.
That was my experience, so I, I said that has not been what I typically. Do is they, I call them and they make the lines in my yard, and then I do the work, right?
Yeah, I don't think, they, they might need to be called again, or, or at least explain where to put that, uh, on the grassy area, not the beginning of the street.
Right, we need to follow up and we need to mark.
And ask them when they could do that, because it's been over two weeks since we polled them. So. But I think the police chief said he'd be involved with that too, because he, he has an idea where it should go, once we find out where it can go.
Right, we just, I mean, if the signs are purchased and they're sitting there, let's just get them up, right?
All right, Ms. Heisen, do you have anything other than what we're gonna talk about in close session?
I do, it's matter.
All right.
Um, this was a discussion that, um. Council Morse and I had with Debbie Smith and Frankie. Months ago, um, and then it's come up again recently, uh, with Laura Malusi, with regards to the, um. Museum, where we would like to do. Either quarterly or a biannual meeting, maybe one or two representatives from. Council, the museum board, scan. Chamber, the pastors board, to kind of. Keep each other kind of up to date, and like, what do you have going on that we can help with, and, and just kind of make sure that we're. All on. You know, the, the same page as far as like planning events and things like that, um. Laura was in, um. Games over, over the weekend, and it got brought up again, so. Um, it's something I'd like to maybe spearhead and start doing, so.
Uh, the other thing Laura and I talked about. Yesterday. Uh, was using items, making a mini display. Uh, where our D M B office will have been, uh, promoting the museum.
Oh, excellent.
You know, uh, just some things from the museum, pictures or items and some wordage, you know, verbiage about the museum and. Just rather than a black space, they're covering up the plexiglass, we'll see, you know, something that would look attractive and informative, so we're, we're kind of working on that.
That's a great idea.
Any questions for Ms. Heisen? Briscoe, you have anything you need to add about anything?
I do not, I was covered in the. Planning Commission. Report.
And. Mister, uh. Uh, Basset is not here, Javier, is anything from A R B that we need to know about?
So this month. We met with Mr. Neighbors. Oh, so we have a recorded work session, so we'd have nothing new other than that, uh, we'll try to work, uh, continuing on, uh, C O As in our, um. Or condition, um, inventory, so we'll keep following up and have regular. Business, I guess I'll put it that way, um, with, um. Our architectural review board.
Okay.
Nothing to report from last week.
All right, um. Ms. Carter, you want to tell us about item seven A, sort down that list?
Yeah, seven A is, um. We all consider to schedule a public hearing. Uh, to change the, um, zoning. And planning fee. We have to, Jim said we have to have a hearing and change the ordinance. Consider approval to advertise to that hearing.
All right, um, we have been presented with the list of those new fees, and everybody's had a chance to look at them. So do I hear a motion to set a public hearing for changing of the fees for our July regular council meeting? And is there a second?
Second.
And is there any further discussion?
I, I just wondered if we could have the, uh. What the current fees are and what the new fees are, I don't know if it was on there, I, were they on there?
Yeah, you got a copy of that.
Okay, we got that, maybe we should have that for the public too.
Any other comments, questions? Can we just do this by voice vote? We don't have to do a roll call vote on this, do we? All right, so, all in favor of having a public hearing on changing of the fee schedule for July, uh, say aye? Okay. Second, uh, you want to lead us into the second one there, Ms. Carter, item B?
Seven B, we did have a public hearing scheduled for the special ed permit. For tourist lodging, the tax map thirty six A three thirty. Uh, that was scheduled for last evening, and since we did not have it, we did have to reschedule, legally. We have, we have to advertise a proper date, and just, um. Bring that to our subvention and ask for vote to. To advertise for that hearing again.
Also, would that be the Ju- uh, July?
Yeah.
Meeting as well, and we have more than one public.
Okay, so that's pretty cut and dried, it was supposed to be last night, and we weren't able to have it last night, and so we want to do it in July, and Mr. Quick is okay with that. So do I hear a motion to, uh, schedule a public hearing on the. Tourist lodging tax nat number thirty six eight three thirty for July meeting on the seventeenth of July, so is there a second?
Second.
And any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, seven C, Ms. Carter?
Uh, yes, to consider the, uh, reappointment of Molly Angivane to the planning commission, return, uh. If they're firing and she has the first interest to be reappointed. And if y'all option that, it would be just a point somewhere.
Molly does a great job.
Yeah, so is there a motion to reappoint Molly for another term on planning commission?
I would, I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Molly.
In a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on Molly? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Molly is reappointed.
Could we just take an action on this, though, in the future, because we did have some discussion back and forth about. Sort of the seats and whatnot, just documenting our process clearly.
Maybe that's something the government service could take up, the procedure, because I think, I think, uh. If somebody resigns, it should be understood that, uh, they. Submit something in writing and it be, you know, because this was confusing with this.
We just need a clear process and set expectations so that everybody knows, and, and when an appointment comes up. What happens, right? Do we just automatically appoint someone, or do we go through a process? So, yeah, the government services could take that up, that would be great.
I, I think, uh, a new person should have an interview, but, uh, somebody like Molly, we know her. Doesn't need a interview. I think, uh, the new people do, but the old people don't, that's my feeling, but, but we could, maybe we could just come up with some guidelines.
And if somebody has an interest.
Right.
You know, it would be nice for them to know, at what point can I put my interest forward and be considered, right, in the future?
One, one of the things on principle, okay, I, I will say this, at, at times Molly and I disagreed on things, but I think out of principle. It's, if we're all, we're short on volunteers as a town, and people who serve in good faith as Molly has served.
Yeah.
I think our pattern should be to reappoint them, that's all I was gonna say, so in terms of, of what we do. We have a lot of people who serve on different committees, and as long as they're willing. We, I think the general principle would be that we would assume they would.
Yeah, this was more about the, uh, the commissioner resigned and then, uh, changed her mind and came back, and that was, and there was, so. And that, that was it, and that was a little confusing.
But then there was discussion, what happened, oh, there might be a second position, we just need to clarify that, that the, you know, if it's. The intention to, if somebody's in a seat to give preference to reappoint them, let's just document it. And then when somebody leaves a seat, then say, okay, this is the process for leaving, and this is the process for hiring, that's all, just make it clear, that's all.
And to support what y'all are saying, we're really talking about two issues, so I totally agree with you that when somebody. Did. Tender a resignation, that's different, what I was more trying to clarify is. Just sense of. When somebody has served in good faith, the idea is to continue of, and I say that with. I, I think it's the voluntary desire of people who want to serve the town. That we affirm that as much as we can.
And I have, you know, I agree with that, but I think we just need to make it clear, I think Molly's wonderful, she's obviously very committed, this is not anything. To say about Molly and her participation, but we should just make it clear. When it's appropriate, and when there's an opportunity for someone else to step in, should they have the interest, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Hey, y'all can be working on that. Item seven.
Standard procedure is if someone. Wants to revise, um, commission during, when their term's not up, I think that was the situation here.
Yeah.
Then her letter of resignation or the resident would come to council, you would accept it. And then you would decide then, most likely to open it up, but I don't think those steps, I don't think they ever got people in it.
No, that step was never taken. But we should let the public know, because other people might say, well, why? Why did that happen? Why? We just need to be very clear and transparent about the process.
Yeah.
So basically, to me, what should happen is if a member of the planning commission submits a resignation to the chairman, the chairman should forward it to the council with a recommendation. And then we can talk about it, and we can do something about it.
Absolutely.
So we'll hopefully, we'll make that, get that in writing somewhere.
But how do we? Uh, I say we, how do we jump the gun? And, and put out the call for someone to replace it?
I think the town administration accepted it and, and did that, unilaterally, I don't think that was a.
Yeah, I don't, I personally didn't know.
Yeah, he, 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 he made a decision, I think he wanted to get on top of it, but.
He was here and gone, and back, well, I knew it.
Right, right, it was, uh, it was, I think he overstepped the boundaries there.
Well, and that's why we need to make the process clear, and again, for anybody who's interested, when there's an opportunity without giving false hope, and then say, oh, just kidding, right?
Well, that's as I expected, so.
Okay, item seven D is about Ms. Carter's contract, and we talked about how there was just a. Basically a typo where it said twenty-five hours when it should have said twenty-nine hours, and that's the whole gist of this particular item, so do you want to explain that to us? Or is that pretty selfish?
Good offer, it should be at thirty-five dollars an hour, and, um. When I saw it said twenty-four and I was working twenty-nine, I didn't want you all to think I was. Trying to work around, you know, with pay, outside of what you all planned to pay, but then. I noticed it's a thousand dollars a week, so it really doesn't matter whether it's twenty-four or twenty-nine or thirty-seven, forty-seven. I'm fine with the way it is now, the positive.
So instead of an hourly, it's just a, a weekly.
It comes to about twenty-nine hours, very close.
So shall we disregard item seven D? Or do we need to go ahead and pass it because of the changes?
Yeah, uh, Jim said it needed to be.
You understand, everybody understand what, what is going on here, we need a motion to approve item seven D. Or basically, we need a motion to affirm. The interim contract of the interim town administrator.
Mister Mayor, if I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more further discussion?
We are excited to have you.
Let's hear the vote, all in favor? Oppose, thank you.
Since you're the end of July, unless. When you all decide. You don't need me anymore, or you.
Okay, let's be aware of that, because that all needs to be extended. Okay, thank you. How do you feel about extending it if?
Indefinitely. For another year.
July twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't specify the year, Ms. Carter.
Damn, caught that typo too.
Item seven E, uh, this, this is something that we. Should have noticed a couple of years ago, but we, nobody thought about it at the time evidently, and so now we can think about it.
Seven E. Would it free to consider the revisions to the personnel policy and handbook section? By A five A, where you would delete all the lists of the holidays, because they do change.
Yes.
And, uh, just simply put in there that it would be according to what serve on state federal holidays. And so. You all would need to go to change. That policy.
Okay, everybody understand what we're talking about?
Yep.
Is there a motion to revise the personnel policy to. In, rather than stating specific holidays, to say the town will observe all state and all federal holidays?
Motion to change.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mister Mayor, just a, a comment that I think. Has become. Important in the last couple of years as our country has adopted. That's an example of a holiday that. We have been. Behind the eight ball, so to speak, in terms of adopting it, so this is our. Opportunity to get in line with what the state and the federal holidays are, that's one of them, and so I think it's a wise thing. For us to do as a town, so I, I think, I think that's a, a wise thing to do.
And I would also like to thank you for switching it to tonight, I know last week there was. Some discussion and confusion on it, I. Felt very conflicted about meeting last night, but also missing the meeting, so.
I was just trying, I was just trying to go by what was written in rules.
But that, see, uh. Let me just say, Ron, I don't know where it's written, it's not in their codes, it's not in their charters, it's not in their ordinances, it's written in the employee's handbook.
Okay.
That's all.
That's fine.
So everything else, you know.
I was just concerned about, we had a public hearing scheduled, now we got us seven hundred dollars to re-advertise our hundred.
And, and tell the person that it's pushed, and, yeah.
Yeah, but anyhow, I would say.
Team was, uh, established. Juneteenth was uh established and signed by Governor Northam October fifteenth of twenty twenty, which was a COVID year. So it really wasn't celebrated in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty one, and this is one of only of four holidays in that are observed by date now, Christmas, July the fourth, Veterans Day and Juneteenth, which is the nineteenth. The nineteenth in twenty twenty one fell on a Saturday. So it's Monday through Friday, you know, it didn't affect government jobs. They decided to uh, you know, observe it on a Friday. Last year, it was on a Sunday. It was supposed to be observed, you know, on that Monday. This year, it fell on a Monday, which worked out good because, you know,
Yeah.
the other holidays are Monday holidays. So uh I'm I'm glad we're in line with the federal and the state and the county now.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one other comment. Thank you, everybody. And I I just want to say an aspect of this. One of the things about our town, every town, and it's it's no secret, we as a country have have had been divided and people have been uh struggled at times. I I was over at, one of the things I do at University of Virginia, when I do tours there is we look at the enslaved workers memorial, which I think is a extremely well-done memorial. And I I simply say that we as a town want to recognize the importance of freedom and the importance of the end of slavery and the towns having the town where it was a part of the Confederacy a long time ago. And I think we recognize that if we move forward in the future, it's important for us to acknowledge things in the past that happened and hope for a brighter future. Mr. Mayor.
Good. So now we have to do the same thing to the rules of procedure.
Yes.
So is there a motion to make the adjustment in the rules of procedure as we just did in the personnel policy?
I move that we change rules of procedure to stay uh all state and federal holidays as opposed to legal holiday, which apparently does.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion on that?
The only question I might have is this uh if if sometimes they don't always celebrate or the day of the holiday, like so for next year, there still will be a three-day holiday, holiday, I would think. Even though it's on Tuesday, but so we'll meet next next year on Monday, right? Even though, okay.
Well, that's a state holiday.
Right, right, but it won't be next year. The next year will be Tuesday or Wednesday, I guess. Okay.
They can, they can move it back.
Oh, they could.
Yeah, they moved it back.
Oh, they might want to have it on a Monday. Yeah.
I guarantee you.
You think so? Okay. So so we do it the day that, so it's not the holiday itself, it's the it's the state and federal celebration of the holiday. Okay.
It's like Washington's birthday.
Right.
President's Day now. It's on Monday. It's on Monday. It's not Washington's birthday. It's the President's.
Okay, okay. So another Monday that we'll have to, okay.
Anything else anybody has on their mind before we go into the closed session?
We didn't vote yet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, we voted.
Um. Voice vote on six uh seven, thank you.
That's what we just did.
Okay.
Yes, aye.
Yeah.
You know.
So everything matches up now.
And I have also.
Yes, yes.
Anything else anybody wants to talk about before we go into closed session?
We didn't go.
Oh, did we? Was that seven E that we just voted on? We just did a mo- we that was seven F we just voted on.
Yeah, that's a problem.
We didn't vote on seventy?
I didn't hear.
I thought we did. We voted on seventy. You missed it. Okay, now the policy, personnel policy and the rules of procedure match. Okay, that's what our goal was. So it's done. All right, anything anybody else wants to talk about before we go into closed session? The closed session shouldn't take real long because we just have a couple of items to discuss, but since their personnel matter is basically we have to have a closed session. So Ms. Gil?
Adios.
Ms. Gil? Bye. Thank you. Come on back. Good to see you. Thanks. And Zoom is off at morning.
I have a quick question.
We also have to certify.
We have to read.
Uh, I can stop. Uh, would you certify? I'm going to stop.
Okay.
Is your question related?
My question was, we're before we went into a session where it was supposed to say.
Who wants to read the thing?
I don't have my copy with me today.
One wrote it out on the agenda too.
Okay, I knew that the council enter a closed meeting is authorized in subsection A of Virginia Code, section two dot two dash three seven one one. Specifically the subsection on discussion, consideration or interviews perspective candidates for employment.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? We're in closed session.